Everyone, I'd like to call to order the Douglas School Committee meeting of Wednesday, May eighteenth. At seven P M. Like to start off by reading our mission statement. The Douglas Public Schools offer diverse learning experiences that meet the academic, social, physical and emotional needs of all students. We provide a safe, supportive and challenging learning environment in which students may achieve academic success and personal growth. Decisions are made in the best interest of students. We will skip the pledge of allegiance tonight and we will go on to our student representatives. We have Catalina and Grace from the middle school here, so we will turn it over to the two of you.
Good evening. My name is Grace Sodat and I'm here with Catalina Acosta. We're both student council members from the middle school. Some middle school. It's been two months since the middle school has given a report to you. The time has flown by with April break in the middle of this.
In a, in April, all grades were focused on MCAS practice and preparation. Eighth grade news. Eighth grade just finished the science MCAS, so they are officially done with MCAS if they were in school. In their academic classes, students and are learning about angles and triangles and recently had a quiz and test on them. In Spanish, they are starting their food unit. Students are each assigned a few to make and present to the, the process to their classes. In their civics classes, citizenship and law are being taught and they recently had a quiz on these as well. Project Citizenship will be the focus for these students as the year wraps up.
Seventh grade news. The seventh grade also concluded MCAS and have started learning more in their academics. In their math classes, students have taught, been taught angles and in E L A, the students started a book about the tragic events of nine eleven. In science, students are learning about animal reproduction and in their history classes, they're learning about the Roman Empire.
Sixth grade news. This year is going great for the sixth grade as the year is coming to an end. So far, they have finished all their MCAS for both math and E L A subjects. In their normal academics, though, they have been researching cells in science class. In geography, students have been researching South America and in E L A, they are practicing writing essays based on woolly mammoths. All students who missed MCAS testing will be completing makeups this week.
Sports. The seventh and eighth grade students were able to try out for have the high school baseball and softball teams. The seasons are well underway as the J V baseball and varsity softball teams have played multiple games and the seasons are coming to an end. The middle school track season has also started as they've had several competitions with other schools so far. A lot of kids on track are going to states and D V Cs are tomorrow.
School-wide activities. The student council started to work on Field Day, which is being planned for mid-June.
During Teacher Appreciation Week in May, the student council made gift bags for every single teacher in the school to show them the respect that we have for them. Each school door was also decorated to show our appreciation for them. Dance. For the first dance of the year, the student council planned an amazing spring fling on April eighth. It was very well attended and the student body had a great time. It was a wonderful fundraiser for student council and we are now able to use the money to make Field Day successful as well.
Penny wars. Class officers decided to present a penny war to our school and it went great. Out of the three grades, seventh grade won and received an ice cream party dance that will be held at the end of May.
Report cards. Quarter through report cards have been released and the kids have done great. Quarter four progress reports were also released last Friday.
Thank you for having us. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Catalina.
Thank you both.
And thank you, Mrs. Hayes, for joining us.
Yes.
Enjoy the outdoors. All right. Next, the Douglas School Committee welcomes public comment on items that are within the scope of the school committee's responsibility. The public comment agenda item is reserved for this purpose. Is there anyone here for public comment? I am not seeing anyone on the chat or in the room. I'll give it a few minutes. All right. Seeing none. We have two new school committee members that I'd like to officially welcome to our community, school community. We have Beth Bergstrom, who is a very known face as spending multiple years as the head of C P A C. And we have Teresa Brooks, so I'd like to congratulate you and thank you. As I'm sure you made it through COVID and all those negotiations and through for Heather and Lisa did the bulk of the work in negotiating for different union contracts in one year, so you made it on the tail end of that. So, welcome to the school committee. I look forward to working with you and the positive impact we're gonna have on our students going forward. At this part of the agenda, for those of you who might be watching on YouTube Live, because we had an election, currently we do not have a school committee chair or vice chair. So the superintendent chairs the meeting until such point that a new chair is elected. That has to happen each year. So for the next portion of the meeting, what we're going to be doing is doing what's called a school committee officer reorganization. We're gonna look for nominations for a chair, then a vice chair, and then for our several subcommittees. And once a chair is officially appointed, at that point, I will turn over the meeting to them. So with that said, I would be happy to entertain a motion for a chair.
Make a motion to nominate Heather Morin for chair.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All right. Motion made by Monique, seconded by Teresa. All those in favor, roll call vote please, since we're on Zoom. And for those of you who are new, we go by alphabetical order by last name.
Aye.
Aye.
Say your, say your name and then aye, please.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
I'm sorry.
We're in the education field and we can't remember.
We start off really good and then we just kind of like.
So with that said, congratulations and Heather, I'm thrilled to have you back as the chair. With that, I will turn it over to you.
So now we need to make selections for a vice chair, so I need to have a nomination for a vice chair. So I will, I'll advocate. I would like to recommend Monique Salvez as our vice chair.
I'm going to nominate Monique Salvez for vice chair.
Motion made by Teresa, seconded by. Who's the me? I'm sorry. Oh, Beth, sorry. By Beth. So I don't have all this, everybody's, I'm on my small little computer thing. And so we need to do a roll call vote.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, and aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
Thank you, thank you. Yay.
Yay. Heather, do you have a copy of all the subcommittee positions that we need? Or would you like me to?
We read, I know the next one is the secretary. We need the secretary.
I do have it up on my screen.
Okay, next we need a secretary.
So this is the takes for executives and need eating note and turns them over into the administrator assistant that works for Dr. Vera as well as Courtney. These are done in a timely manner, just to do until we can release them from the public, but we need to have a secretary. And it's not that difficult. I, I, as well as Monique have done the secretary duties. I'm always happy to facilitate. I will take notes this evening when we go into executive session for the secretary, so you can kind of see the format that Courtney has put forth for us to utilize.
Julie can do it. So somebody can nominate me. I has done it before. As long as I'm using that form that Courtney provides.
Yes, it's formed.
That's what I've done, yep.
So I'd be making a motion to nominate Julie Mulder as secretary. I'd be needing a second.
Second.
Second by Monique. Roll call vote, please.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, and aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
Right.
Congratulations.
Oh, my God, I'm so excited.
Thank you.
Next, we have a bunch of subcommittees. As we go through the subcommittees, for people who are new, if you have questions on what they are and level of commitment and how often we meet, I'd be more than happy to do that. First one is the policy subcommittee. We need two members. Typically, we've met maybe about a half dozen times a year. We've met in my office. School committee's two main responsibilities, as you know, a budget and policy. So whenever we write a policy, change a policy, revise a policy, we meet as a subcommittee to go over it and then we meet in live school committee and have three meetings of that policy. So we need two members of the policy subcommittee.
I'd volunteer for our policy subcommittee, Teresa Brooks.
We need another person to, to join that, that committee.
I can join the, the policies of committee.
Perfect.
All right, I'll make a, need to make a, so we need to do a motion and a second to nominate Teresa Brooke and Monique Salvez to the policy committee. So I need a second, because I made the motion.
I'll second.
Beth is seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, and aye. Sorry, it's gonna get taken.
Salva, aye.
Thank you.
Next is the budget subcommittee. Courtney and I want to get back to having more frequent meetings as we go through the budget process. This year was really difficult as we did the budget, given the fact that we didn't have a contract for F Y twenty-two and we were working on a contract for F Y twenty-three. A lot of it, the F Y twenty-three contract and budget was contingent upon town meeting. So it was, it was an interesting year to say the least in doing it. I saw Courtney's eyes get really large there for a minute. It was an interesting year for the budget, but want to be able to start this process a little bit earlier and dive into it a little bit more than we have had the opportunity this year to do so. Usually, we start the budget process, Courtney starts it in about November, finalizing it in December, January, and we start the presentations to school committee in February. So we'd be looking for probably two to three meetings, maybe four, as we do that, starting sometime in March.
I would be willing to learn about the budget if nobody else is interested.
So I, I will be, I would, I'm willing to stay on the budget committee if nobody else on the school committee wants to stay on the budget committee. Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion to nominate Beth Bergstrom and Heather Moore into the budget subcommittee. I need a second, please.
Teresa Brooks will second.
Teresa Brooks seconds. Aldo's, roll call vote, sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, and aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
If there's every, if there's every year to get our negotiation subcommittee, this is the. So as long as we don't have a massive tragedy, we, we have all of our, all of our union contracts done. We're entering year two for our custodians, our paraprofessionals and A B As and our cafeteria workers and we're year one of a three-year contract with the Douglas Teachers Association. So I don't see this being a heavy lift going forward for this year.
So I will just say this, I, I've enjoyed my time on the, the negotiation subcommittee. I'm not opposed to being the second member of it, but I do believe it's beneficial for school committee members to understand the various contracts we have on the people that work in our school departments, so.
I have a question. I would be willing, but I'm not sure as my status as like Massachusetts Teacher Association member as a teacher in another district, if that would be the best fit.
I, I think it, you're, it would be a conflict of interest for you, Teresa. So I think we, we cannot put you on the negotiations.
I would agree.
Well, but like you said, I don't, there's no negotiations that you know of that are like pending, right?
But she would make decisions if we had to go to arbitration for stuff and we do have some pending arbitration going on right at the moment. So it could be a conflict of interest. So that, that's where I just, just to be fair and transparent with everybody when it.
That's why I put it out there.
And Teresa, what I'll do is I'll reach out to lead, to school council, just to get an official guidance and ruling as to what you can and can't be a part of.
He is the only place, be a conflict.
So we had Heather who agreed to be the second person.
I'll be on it.
Thank you, Monique.
So I'll make a motion to nominate Monique Salvez and Heather Moore into the negotiation subcommittee. I need a second.
Second, Julie.
Seconded by Julie. Need a roll call vote, please.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Salva, aye.
Sorry.
Sorry, no worries.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Next, we have the Health and Wellness Subcommittee. Health and Wellness Subcommittee meets four times a year to go over several of the health and wellness policies that we have in school, talk about social, emotional well-being of students, talk about physical education, talk about some of our health policies, talk about school nursing. So it was an all-encompassing subcommittee in, in group. We typically meet four to five times a year, probably around about four o'clock in the afternoon and done via Zoom.
Okay, I can do that.
I can do that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd be looking for, make the motion to nominate Julie Mulder and Teresa Brooks to the Health and Wellness Subcommittee.
Teresa Brooks, second.
I need a roll call vote, please.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, and aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
I am not even going to attempt to dive into the next two and I'll turn it over to Courtney to explain. The first one is the signer and alternate signer for payroll warrants.
Yes, um, so Mass General Law, well, up until a few years back, required a majority of a board, a committee that has the requirement for approval of either payroll or payable warrants. And that would be for the school committee, that would be three members. And that still holds, holds true that that's, that didn't go away, but a few years back, which was really good, they do allow the school committee to appoint one signer for both the payroll, for the payroll warrants and one signer for the accounts payable warrants. It makes it easier to be able to, because you know, everything has to be timely to get the payroll process and the accounts payable warrants process. So what that would entail, starting with the payroll, payroll is done on a biweekly basis. Typically, it is completed or must be completed on every biweekly on a Thursday. So typically between Thursday and Friday, we do need the payroll warrant reviewed and signed. It is previously signed before you get it by myself and Dr. Vera. And then after the school committee signer, signs a payroll warrant, it goes to the finance director town accountant. It's reviewed and signed by the town administrator and also has to be signed off by, by Jean Lovett, the finance director town accountant. Well, under her town accountant actual title. So again, it's biweekly, very short timeframe in order to, to do it. I will, do want to put that out there. There's a little bit more flexibility with the accounts payable warrants, but we'll start with the payroll first to see.
Can you just explain the new process that, that's, we're able to do with signing? I know that's changed.
Accounts payable. The payroll, that's a pretty quick turnaround. But we can certainly for payroll, there's possibility of bringing it.
Isn't there an after-hours type? Set up now?
Yeah, that's what I was just starting to say, that on Thursday night, as long as Jean gets it by Friday morning, I believe, we can definitely bring it to the, we'd be happy to bring it to the municipal center.
But I also thought too, Courtney, that it was electronic, like we could do an electronic signature too, I think, is what Jean said. We could do that too, where you guys, when we were, were doing the research for it. Because we heard, you already had that program. To do with the, the digital signature.
No, 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 we didn't even, that wasn't, um.
Yeah, I, I believe it was. So I think we need to go and have another meeting because that's my understanding, we were going to be able to sign it.
My understa, my understanding, if I remember correctly, was that we were going to set up a Google folder and that school committee was going to be able to sign it digitally that day if needed and then come back and do a wet signature at a later date.
Oh, after, okay.
So it was going to be set up through Google Docs where I would, Courtney would sign it, I would sign it. You would get the cover page and digitally sign it and at a later date to not be locked into that one hour window on Thursday, you would come back later and do a wet signature or.
It's not a one-hour window, but yes, that's correct. As long as she got an original signature after the fact, okay.
And I did talk to, to Jean, I mean, that was her.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't have a problem being one of the signatures. I pretty much readily, you can find me, you send me a text message, email doesn't work, but send me a text message. I'll check my phone and go in and do whatever. So I'm not opposed to being one of the signatures for that because I know it's a quick turn. A lot of us do work during the day, so just trying to get somebody to the school is just not an ideal.
Yep, yep.
I appreciate us trying to do a process improvement with this. So I'm not opposed to being one of the signers for the payroll warrants, because I know that is a very hot commodity, needs to be done in a timely manner.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. No, Beth, have you?
No, go ahead. You can do it. I'm a new girl. Whatever, nobody else wants.
I was just doing it to make it easy, but you know, I'm all for the new people jumping in where you feel comfortable doing that too, so.
And the other thing is, and I do want to point out as well, well, first, I just want to remind everyone, we do need a primary and then an alternate. But also, it is a good way for the new members coming on to become familiar with the payroll, because you actually, you've got all the, you know, you've got documentation.
Beth, if you feel comfortable doing that, then I would welcome that.
Courtney, would you have time to just kind of walk me through it a little bit if I came during the day, one day?
Oh, absolutely. Be happy to.
I don't mind you, as long as nobody else wants to. I don't mind. I have a little bit of time during the day now that I can come in and do that.
They set it up really good too. It's all nice and packaged up and it's easy to, so.
And I think we talked about getting the, the two members of the school committee a card swipe, so you could come in at your convenience to do the wet signature and have it set up. So we do the digital to get it through the process and then we do give you guys a card swipe to come into the main office and do a wet signature.
Perfect. I'll do that.
And then we talked about an alternative for the summer due to the fact that we closed, the building's alarmed at early in the afternoon.
Perfect.
So who's the, Heather, are you gonna stay on as the primary?
I can either be the primary or the alternate, whatever, whatever Beth's comfortable with.
Do you mind being the primary, Beth? So especially when you said you have availability during the day?
Absolutely. No, I can do that. As long as that doesn't bother anybody else, I don't mind doing that.
So I would be looking, I'll make the motion for Beth Bergstrom to be the primary, Heather Moore to be the secondary for the payroll warrants. I would need a second, please.
Teresa Brooks, second.
Okay, and a roll call vote.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, and aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
So the next one is the accounts payable and warrants. And warrants, so we'd be looking for a primary and a secondary for that one too as well. This one, I don't mind being an alternate either, because we have a way forward with this. Again, it would be, if I have to come in after hours, already have the card swipe if it was over in town hall. I think we're gonna do one over at the school, but during the summer months, it would be at town hall.
I don't mind doing it, but if it's just as easy that I'm there to do it, but if anybody else is interested, I don't want to step on anybody's toes either.
And just to let everyone know, the, we do try to do, we basically do an accounts payable warrant each week.
So I'll make some motion that Beth, you're gonna be the primary, Heather, Beth Bergstrom will be the primary, Heather Moore will be the alternate. I need a second, please, for payroll warrants.
Teresa Brooks, second.
A roll call vote, please.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
And I think that is it for the subcommittees, correct, Paul?
That is it.
Sweet. So now we go back over into the, any old businesses that we need to discuss?
There isn't.
And so we're gonna move into the new business, which is the superintendent section.
All right, welcome, welcome, everyone. I'm, I'm gonna table Project Lead the Way presentation. We had some middle school and high school teachers and I believe students coming to the school committee meeting to talk a little bit about what Project Lead the Way is, what we've done this year and what the vision is for next year. They were gonna bring in some hands-on activities and some samples of what they did. This forum really didn't lend itself to it, so we're gonna table that for the next meeting. Next on the agenda is a brief COVID update. It's been about two months since I've had a formal meeting on COVID or brought up as part of my report, just to highlight some things and some trends that we're seeing and inform the committee and the community. We saw a decrease in our COVID numbers from February through mid-March. From mid-March to now, we've started to see a slow uptick in the numbers. And they've slowly gone up from mid-March. I think there was one week in April where it dipped down and then came back up. Like to remind everyone that masking remains a personal choice. It's always an option. It is a great way to make sure that you're safe and others are safe. So again, just to remind people that masking is absolutely a choice for people. We have seen both in schools and for those of you who've been out and about, an increase in people in schools, adults and students wearing masks. So if you feel safer wearing a mask, I would strongly encourage you to do that. One will also have people be mindful of our safety protocols. If you're feeling sick, stay at home. I sent out last week a reminder as to what are the symptoms to look for. Please, if you're exhibiting those symptoms, get tested, stay at home. Now have an abundance of access to at-home kits. We've shared out the link. If you want to opt into the testing program, it's two clicks away and every other week you'll have access to a free test kit. So that's where we're at with COVID. We have seen that, that uptick in, in reaching out to superintendents and colleagues across the Commonwealth. School districts are reaching out and just reminding families and the community and everyone just to be smart. And to be mindful of their symptoms a- and others, I think there's only. Two districts that I know of that have gone to mandating masks, I think one was up in Western Mass in Northampton. And I believe Wayland or one of the W's out in the Metro West is doing it on a week-by-week basis. Those are the only two that I've seen out of the three hundred fifty communities that have done any level of masking, but. Our numbers relative to Valley, relative to Worcester County and relative to the state remain low. Um, and again, just remind people to be mindful of. Their symptoms, to follow our safety protocols, so we can continue our last five weeks of school in our current situation. Um, so. That's all I have on COVID, more than happy to answer questions from the committee if people have them.
I think that there's a lot more cases than we are being told, let me just put it that way. But you know what, if people aren't sick and everyone's going about their business, then you know what, just as well. So hopefully everybody stays healthy and where this is just a little bump in the road.
Yeah, it it's tough to track now the state numbers because. Prior to the, prior to Christmas. The availability of the wide-scale availability of test kits really wasn't there. Um, with now the at-home test kits, you're seeing a lot more of it, you're seeing also a dilution of the virus. So and people, more people being vaccinated and boosted, so it's not impacting people we used to um. As I said, I've been tracking the wastewater numbers, uh, so y- you're seeing those kind of. Oscillate up and down over the past few weeks, but then that gives us a true picture of 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 where we're going. We had a meeting with Dusty, I believe it was two weeks, no, two weeks ago, met with Commissioner Riley and um. He said he sees a slight uptick going in uh, end of April, beginning of May, but he also said that. From what he's hearing from his medical experts, it would be decreasing towards the end of May. We shall see if that happens, but you're right Julie, there's a lot of information out there.
Oh, can I ask just one question too, so I know we're talking about COVID, but um, I know the COVID tests now, they include the flu test, have you seen any um. Such a weird time of year, but like, have you actually seen real true flu cases in the school?
Not that I know of, not that I'm aware of. For the flu. All right. Next, um, we added to the agenda, the American Student Assistance Grant. Uh, about a year and a half ago, Blackstone Valley Superintendent Consortium applied for and received a grant for four hundred fifty thousand dollars. From the American Student Assistance um. Organization. As part of this grant, our students are gaining workforce skills through evening courses that they take, through field trips, through job shadowing. And through internships, so it's a great opportunity for our kids, this is where some of our students have taken welding classes, they've taken cybersecurity classes. I think they've taken a medical, uh, metal fabrication classes. Uh, we got this grant in COVID, we wanted to do a grant and a launch and a kickoff meeting for it. Unfortunately, that did not happen with COVID, so we've scheduled a grant kickoff with all the local area schools. We we're inviting members of the school committee, we're inviting members of the Board of Selectmen, town administrators, state reps, state senators. Um, students will be there as part of the event. Um, it's being held on Thursday, June ninth at three o'clock at Hope Dale Junior Senior High School. Should last about an hour and a half, two hours, and I just wanted to come in, I don't need a, I would like someone from the school committee there. Um, extend a formal invitation, I know emailed you, but if someone could RSVP to me within the next. Um, week or so, I'd appreciate it, it'd be great to have um, someone from the school committee present at the event, again, it's Thursday. Thursday, June ninth at three P M, I'll be sending out invitation uh, probably next, at some point next week.
Might be able to get.
We we will.
I might be able to get out for that.
Okay.
I'll check a little early, you know.
Who's sorry, that's on my way home, so I could definitely come as well.
Perfect, so I'll send out an invitation, um, sleep on it and then if you get RSVP to me, so I can then send it out to Hope Dale, so we have firm numbers, that'd be fantastic. All right, and that's all I have for my uh. Presentation tonight.
Um, I just have one thing, uh, I know Josh Romano's and he's the principal at the high school. About the Special Olympics on May twenty-sixth, looking for a school committee member to support that event.
I'll be there.
Okay. I just wanted to throw it out there, because I don't know if everybody saw, it just came in this afternoon, I do believe. And do we know what day graduation is?
Graduation is Friday, June.
Fourth.
Third.
Third.
Yeah, Friday, Friday, June third at five thirty. Out on the backfield.
I'm going to try to be there this year too. Anything else, Dr. Vera?
That is it for tonight.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, I know some of the families in town have been um, concerned about busing with the new project, um, like. That the town's doing on um, Gilboa Street and North Street, do we anticipate any issues of busing or anything like that?
No, so we.
No.
I'll I'll turn it over to Courtney, but we've been meeting, um. We've been meeting with the town on it, we met, we had a a large meeting probably about two, three weeks ago. And we have a standing meeting set up every week with a project manager from from the town, right now, they're not. They're not anticipating any backups with the busing, they're actually trying to do the bulk of the construction between nine o'clock and um. Nine o'clock and two o'clock to not have to impact any of the busing, and they have a second shift going on at night, so it doesn't impact the busing. They said they would reach out to us if there's ever anything that's going to go on with sidewalks or changes. They would reach out to us so that we could reach out to families, is that your understanding Courtney? Yeah.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right.
The next thing, um, accounts payable report. Did we have any Courtney, I I didn't get a chance, I I'm I'm on my little screen, so.
No, we do not have any this evening.
Thank you, so now we're moving on to the consent agenda, um, is the F Y twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar?
So in front of you, you have a copy of the school calendar, really the only major significant change from previous years to this year. Is that as a result of contract negotiations um, between the school committee and the Douglas Teachers Association, we were able to add an extra professional development day. To the start of the school year, so typically the first day of school is on a Tuesday. This year, it will be on a Wednesday, so we have two PD days to start the school year off on Monday, the twenty-ninth and Tuesday, the thirtieth. With the first day this year now being on Wednesday, thirty-first for students, that's really the only major change um. From last year's calendar.
So I'd be looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the school calendar for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion made by Beth, seconded by.
Julie.
Seconded by Julie, roll call vote, please.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva's, aye.
Thank you. Um, and now we're to the interview and an appointment of the Director of Special Ed and Student Support Services, Dr. Vera.
I'd like to officially welcome Dr. Kimberly Merrick to the school committee and to Douglas, I'm going to do an introduction for um. Dr. Merrick, have her give a brief opening statement and then give the school committee. Um, whenever time is needed to also ask Dr. Merrick some questions, so. Dr. Merrick received her undergraduate from Saint Michael's College up in Vermont in elementary education. She went on to receive her masters in education from Salem State University. Um, she then went to Baltimore, Maryland to Johns Hopkins University, where she received. Her certificate of advanced graduate studies, and a few years after completing that, she received her doctorate in special, in education. Again, from Johns Hopkins University, uh, she's been a classroom teacher, she's been a college professor. She had the pleasure of working at the Department of Education, she has spent ten years as a special education director. In multiple districts and she has also been a superintendent of schools. Um, so it's a great pleasure that I introduce and welcome Dr. Merrick. To you, so Dr. Merrick, I'll turn it over to you for a quick statement before the school committee asks some questions.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you so much, Dr. Vera. Thank you all for inviting me here tonight, I know it's an obligation, but thank you for letting me speak and kind of introduce myself. I know um, at least one of you was on my initial panel and I know Courtney, you were on my panel, so nice to see everybody again. Um, you know, often I'm asked, well, why Douglas, I mean, why, why any district, why, why did you apply? Why did you want to work there, and I have to say that I watch your school committee meetings, which. Uh, just to get an idea, if there was anything going on in special education, there seems to be a few things um, in the works and so. I thought that given my uh, breadth and depth of experience and education and especially in special education, of course. That I could offer something to your district. And so I came and I met with this wonderful team at the elementary school and was fabulous and seemed to connect with them and. Um, appreciated their interview questions, but I think the biggest thing that really helped me connect to Douglas. Honestly, was my one-to-one meeting with Dr. Vera. And I feel like we could be thought partners together, kind of work on some things, you're already doing really great things. But there's some areas that perhaps we could do things a little bit better, and so I am really excited about the opportunity to. Look at those things and see what we, maybe we can work on moving forward and sharing that with all of you. So I guess that's a brief introduction to you, I think that um, the biggest takeaway that I want you to really think about is. The biggest thing that I bring to special education is my passion though. I do have four children, all four of my children have been on I E Ps, I have two with significant disabilities, my oldest son has autism, my second son has cerebral palsy. And that allows me just that wonderful ability to sit down with a parent and say, come on in, let's have coffee and talk about. How we could do things better and how we can help. And um, I think that Douglas is a town that would really appreciate that, and so that brings me to you tonight, so thank you. The opportunity.
Questions for Dr. Merrick?
Not so much a question, but I thank you so much for your willingness to apply for the position and accept it. I look forward to working with you and collaborating with one another. We do have some challenges with some of our special education, I'm sure that you'll see just from our school committee meetings of what's been going on. Um, so I look forward to working with you and again, welcome.
I appreciate that, Heather, that's awesome, and I look forward to working with you too, thank you.
And there's like um, these Aunt Annie's wrapped up pretzel things with a hot dog in the middle.
And I'll just say, I, you know, looking over your resume, it looks like quite well-rounded. Um, and that you have touched, um, you know, a lot of different. Sectors of the educational world and um, so that will be really, that could be very helpful with trying to relate to. Parents and teachers and staff and administration and, you know, just seeing that well-rounded experience was was nice, so. So yeah, I'm happy to see you here.
Thank you, thanks so much, appreciate it.
You came for applying to us, um, I think one of the things, so I um, have different roles, multiple roles in the district that serve. On the CPAC committee for the past five years as the chair, um, and I think one of the things that. One of the things that I liked, um, that you talked about was meeting with the, with the students. And meeting with the families and meeting with all the stakeholders, and I think that, you know. One of the things that we have prided ourselves on for years is that our administrator knew our families, our administration knew our kids. Um, and I think that, you know, having somebody with your experience being visible in our programs will be very well received by the families. Um, but I really just, I appreciate that you want to talk to the students, because we can think we have the most beautiful, well-run programs. But if they don't matter to the students, they don't matter, so.
That's so true, right, yeah, I think, you know, we talked about a lot in my different interview parts um, during my. Interviews in Douglas, but one of the things that I did not mention, which was very rewarding time for me, was when I was superintendent and I had a student cabinet. And the students just had these amazing ideas about how things should be. And sometimes they just need a little direction to get there, and it was some of the most rewarding work I I have to admit that I've ever done. And one thing that Dr. Vera just mentioned is Project Lead the Way, which they they actually were very excited about, so I'm excited for you. You all to hear about that, because it's a very interesting program, so. Anyway, thank you so much.
Yeah, we look forward to working with you in different capacity.
Yeah, great. No hard questions. Well, thank you all, I really, really appreciate it, Heather, did you want to say something?
I said those later, so.
Oh, no, bring them on, bring them on, absolutely, and I'd love to meet you, if you're in the building, stop in, say hello, okay?
Sounds good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, the next thing on our agenda is to review the F Y twenty-three.
Before we do that, um, would you like a quick executive session to talk about the contract for. Dr. Merrick, and then we could come back out and officially appoint, or do you want to wait till the end to do that?
Um, if you want to go out of order, I'm 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 not opposed to it.
Um, yeah, can we, let's just do that. We can do that now and do the executive session and then come back into open session and wrap this up.
So just for school committee members, the new ones that are here, we have to go into an executive session to have a discussion. And then we'll come back out, so I'm going to make the emotion, I'll leave a second and then we'll do a roll call vote, so just to. Walk you through, and we're going a little out of, out of agenda, but it's okay, we can do that. Going to do a, enter into executive, discuss the Director of Special Education and Student Support Service contract. First, General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two, Subsection two. Conduct a strategy session in preparation for contract negotiation for non-union personnel, Dr. Merrick, Merrick, sorry. And we're going to enter executive session at seven forty-eight P M. And we will come, come back out of executive session and return to school committee for our regular session. I need to have a uh, a second and then a roll call vote, please.
Monique Salva's, I second.
Thank you, Monique, motion made by Heather, seconded by Monique, roll call vote, please.
Beth Bergstrom, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Glenn Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva's, aye.
Thank you.
All right, we will be right back, Dr. Merrick.
Enjoy.
Thank you, hang on.
Monique, I think we have to like go out.
Oh, that's right, we have a new, yes, there's another Zoom link, okay.
Yep.
Those watching at home for your patience as we are over in executive session. Do we have? Forgot to turn my camera on. All right, so welcome back, um, at this time, I'd ask the school committee to entertain. At this time, I'd ask the school committee to entertain a motion to approve Dr. Kimberly Merrick as the next Director of Special Education and Student Support Services for the Douglas Public Schools.
Teresa Brooks, so moved.
I'd be looking for a second, please.
A second from Julie.
Seconded by Julie. Roll call vote, please.
Beth Berkshire, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
Congratulations, Kim, and welcome officially now.
I'm going to get the T-shirt that says I'm muted, but thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. I think we have a few other things left on the agenda.
So we're going to go back to the FY twenty-two, twenty-three appointment of the school physician.
Um, with the school calendar?
We already did the calendar.
The physician, the physician. On the agenda, but we don't have a page for that.
Um, well, I did send everything out to everyone, all of the packet was in one
I forgot. Yeah, I skipped over the HV. I'm sorry, Courtney. So.
Was it?
I'm sorry.
I skipped over the HV one, but there's
Oh, no, I was more, I don't recall that we, we approved the school calendar.
I think we did.
I think we did. Yeah, I thought you went right into
Beth did the motion.
Okay, okay. All right, um, the next one on the agenda is the to approve the FY two thousand twenty-three to FY two thousand twenty-five HVAC maintenance, repair, and inspection services bid contract. And um, the school district issued the invitation for bids with bid proposals due Wednesday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two at ten AM. It was advertised as required on the state's central register combines, which is part of the state's operational services division, the town clerk's office, the wisdom telegramming is that, and the school district website. Six vendors did request and receive the bid document. But we did receive only one bid, and it was received from Renaud HVAC and Controls, Inc., which is our current vendor. I know that does happen with a lot of bids that go out. You don't get a lot of responses. But just like with the bus transportation, though, I do have to say that we've been extremely pleased with Renaud's service, their timeliness, and everything has been fantastic for the years that we have had them in the past. Their bid proposal, they have to bid for FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, but the bid is awarded based on the grand total. And the grand total for the next three years is one hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. This is based on hourly rates, both regular and overtime for master licensed technicians in both journeyman and apprentice helper categories. And also to remind everyone that this contract is subject to the prevailing wage law. And therefore, the rates are based on those, on the prevailing wage schedule as well. And for each of the three years, I have to give them a, a new prevailing wage schedule that I have to obtain from the state. Um, really, do we require work on Saturdays and holidays? So luckily, the overtime rates or anything like that usually never takes place or is needed unless there's a real extreme emergency or something like that. As far as compared to our current year that we're in, the rate for, say, for the first year of the contract FY twenty-three for the master licensed technician is a hundred and twenty dollars per hour. And it was a hundred and fifteen. That's what it is currently. So it's very small increase compared to everything that we're seeing out there right now for increases. And the other thing was the the other aspect of the bid is materials. And materials shall be invoiced at the contractor's cost plus a certain percentage that they put in their bid. And it was, it's thirty percent. And in the prior year, it's twenty-five percent. And that's not really a surprise because as we all know, everything is going through the roof. So I don't really see that as being a huge increase, to be honest with you. So as far as a grand total goes, interestingly enough, it's actually a little bit less than what was in the prior bid from three years ago. As far as overall, now, keep in mind, though, that doesn't equate to what we will be paying each year for services because you can never predict when you're going to have a problem in any of our four buildings and when we have to call them. But as far as the bid, the total grand total bid, again, very, very pleased with the company. Um, so I am recommending approval of this contract. And I'm very happy to see that we had a company with all the other issues that are going on. You know, in our jobs and school district and everything to be concerned with or whatever, that we have someone we can rely on. Very timely, very responsive, excellent service. So I'm very pleased with that. Does anyone have any questions?
If there are no questions, I'd be looking for a motion, please.
Monique Salva, I move to approve the HVAC maintenance, repair, and inspection services contract to Renaud HVAC and Controls, Inc. Beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two through July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five pursuant to the invitations for bids proposal of May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two made by Renaud HVAC and Controls, Inc. Based on a grand total amount of one thousand eight hundred and seven one thousand eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the three-year contract.
Motion made by Monique, seconded by
Teresa Brooks, second.
Lisa Brooks, second. Roll call vote, please.
Beth Berkshire, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next is the physicians. Courtney, if you want to talk about that one, or is that Dr. Vera?
No, that's me. No. Um, so that is the FY, this for the FY, the yearly appointment of the school physician as contracted services. Um, this is based on Master General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section fifty-three, which requires a school committee to appoint a school physician. Dr. Soraco has served as a district school physician for a number of years. I did outline the fault, the services that are in the contract. And I did actually work quite a bit on that contract a few years back to kind of increase the verbiage in it and what the requirements were. The, I did check with her and she's fine with the fee that she currently, actually, I did attach the whole contract for you as well, with the fee that she has been receiving for several years now, and that's thirty-five hundred dollars a year. And that has been budgeted.
Does anyone have? Sorry.
There've been no changes from last year?
No changes at all. Except for the, the dates in the contract.
If there are any questions, I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to appoint Dr. Soraco to the physician. I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not sure of the verbiage. That would be wonderful.
I'll be happy to, um, to read it. It's a move to approve Dr. Elizabeth T. Soraco as the school physician for FY two thousand twenty-three pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section fifty-three.
So moved.
Motion made, Teresa, by Beth. Roll call vote, please.
That's me. Beth Berkshire, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, moving on to the school business and operations management report.
I do not have anything for this evening. Anything else?
Um, Eric, Dr. Vera, do we have any topics not anticipated?
We do all this evening.
Let me see what else is on the agenda. We did the executive session. So just a quick reminder for June first of two thousand twenty-two, I'd like all the school committee members to please bring their calendar for us to do dates for the tentative offsite. Dr. Vera, do you want to talk about that very briefly? So for the new, the new school committee members, Heather, aye.
Yeah, absolutely. So one thing a lot of school districts do, a lot of school committees do, is they do a summer retreat. It, it's structural as a school committee meeting, so we would still conduct some of our general business that we need to do for the first half portion of the evening. Probably do it during the day, you know, in eight to twelve, nine to two format, but the bulk of the meeting would be, would really be centered around professional development and goal setting. So what are the goals of the school committee for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year? Your goals filter to my goals, filter to school goals, filter to principal goals, filter to teacher goals. So when you can get that vertical alignment, when everyone's working towards the same golden format, you, you get that synergy, you, you get that structure that's so needed. So instead of having one building do one set of goals, another building do another set of goals, I'm working on a set of goals, Courtney's working on another set of goals, Kim Merrick working on another set of goals, school committee's working on a fifth set of goals. It's nice for us to have that time over the summer, once the, the busyness of the school year has been put behind us and we've had some time away where we can escape. And then to get together that mid-July, end of July, to be able to sit down and just really, we'll, we'll walk through a couple of different activities and structures as to what you value and what's important to you as a committee. And then we'll start that goal-setting process for the school committee, which will then trickle down to our blueprint to me and to everyone else in the district. So that's what we'd be looking to do at some point in mid, end of July, early August. My, my retreat for the leadership team is structured, I believe, for the third week of August. So it, it's great that we'll have the opportunity to meet prior to meeting with the leadership team prior to start of the school year.
Sounds good. So I would be asking for you to just look at your calendars and if we can figure out dates that would work for everybody. I understand some of us might not be able to break away, but if we could set, also set up as an alternative, a Zoom session if we don't have too many members, because I do want to get everybody's participation, because it is important. And if we're going to do the superintendent's goals during this timeframe, this is the ideal time to do it versus we did it really late last year in the fall. After-school has already been established and it was October, I do believe. So but I understand a lot, people may not be able to step away because of work responsibilities. So if we can come up with a couple of dates for mid to late July, I think it would be appropriate. So that's what I'd be asking for, and I'll be putting that on the agenda the next time we meet on June first.
I just have to say, like, I think starting at that time of year is really good for everybody to feel like when the start of the school year comes, you know, we've know what's, what's happening, what the goals of the year are. I think with this past year, you know, it was a return to a full year post-COVID. And, you know, we were like wanting everything to be better. And, you know, it, so we were trying to just get our bearings at the beginning of the school year, I think. But I think if we could, if the staff and all of us can be confident about where we're going at the start, I think that that would be good for our kids to start the school year with everybody saying, we got this, you know?
Agreed.
It'll be really nice to have pro, be proactive, as much as we tried not to be reactive this school year. I don't think any of us really knew what the challenges were going to be. So I think it's a good thing that we'll be able to do that before.
Yep. So if I, there's nothing else for us to discuss, I'd be looking for a motion for adjournment and then do a roll call vote.
Monique Salva, I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Monique, seconded by seconded by Julie. Roll call vote, please.
Beth Berkshire, aye.
Teresa Brooks, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Monique Salva, aye.
Thank you all. We are adjourning at eight thirty-seven PM on May eighteenth. See you on June first. Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Scott.
Yes, thank you, Scott, for helping us.
Not a problem. Good night.
Good night.